Board of County Commissioners, work session for this Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. It's 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Manzur, Chair of the Board. To my right is Commissioner Carolina Mejia. We have Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and the meeting is livestreamed on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Topic for this afternoon is Comprehensive Plan, Docket Item CP19. And with that very brief introduction, we have one hour slotted. I do have a hard stop with a canvassing board meeting at 3 o'clock, so we will need to wrap up about five minutes before 3. Assistant County Manager, did you want to say anything before we go to stop?
Uh, thank you. No, I'm going to turn it right over in the interest of time.
Uh, who's taken lead? Chris? Andrew Vaughn? My people?
Yeah, I'm just gonna set it up real quickly here for everybody. Um, yeah, so this is a comprehensive land use amendment. Um, the proponent has requested a land use change that does require a comprehensive plan amendment. It changes, um, map that is adopted in the comprehensive plan. This is, um, part of that big docket that the commissioners see early in the year. Um, and this is the product that comes out of that docket. Um, this particular project was docketed in, uh, April of 2020, so this is on the 2020-2021 docket. So we are moving through our docket, um, that the Board has in our work plan that the Board has set up for us. So I'm gonna kick this over to Andrew so that he can, um, move through the update for you.
Hello, Commissioners. Give me one second to share my screen. Can everyone see the presentation?
No.
Okay. Hello, my name is Andrew Vaughn. I'm Associate Planner with Community Planning. Today I am presenting on CP19 Upcastle Land Use and Rezoning Amendment. This is an informational presentation and no decision is needed by the Board today. Um, if we can please hold off any questions until the end, we can, uh, just fly through this presentation and nail through the questions. As Chris mentioned, this is part of the 2020-2021 official develop, uh, official docket of the comprehensive plan. This is a citizen-initiated request by Ray Schuler and Ryan and Catherine Hoover. The applicants are requesting to amend the land use and rezone the property from RRI, or RR1 to 5 to RRI. The parcels are located at 5641 and 5505.
Andrew, could you pause one second? I don't think your slides are moving on the Zoom screen.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that. Again, the property is 5641 and 5505, 222nd Avenue Southwest. The parcels total approximately 32 acres. Um, each parcel contains a single dwelling structure and accessory structures. Each parcel contains a well and septic system. Any well that is abandoned will be required to be removed upon redevelopment. This is the rezoning map. Uh, the area shown in purple is the area in which is requesting be rezoned. The properties to the north and to the east are zone RRR1 to 5. The properties to the west are RL1 to 1, and everything in gray to the south is Lewis County. Located on this property are two areas of nationally significant farmland, shown in orange with a red arrow pointing to them. Nationally significant farmland is land best suited for long-term intensive crop production within the continuous United States, and each state's best land is approximately the better half of all agricultural land in each state. The property contains two prime soils, Indanola Lomi Sand 0% to 3%, and Nisqually Lomi Fine Sand 0% to 3%. Sorry, my screen's not, current screen over, well. The two parcels are located within the opportunity zone. An opportunity zone is a federally designated area, which was created in 2017 for distressed communities in need of economic development and job creation. The opportunity zone, uh, provides a platform for private investment under certain conditions. It may be eligible for deferred tax treatments. This is one of five opportunity zones within Thurston County. This is the build, this is a slide on the Buildable Lands Report. Uh, the Buildable Lands Report does state that there with, there is adequate industrial land for the next 20 years within Thurston County. The county estimates that it will need, it will accommodate approximately 30,000 new commercial and industrial jobs, and will require approximately 15 million square feet of buildable area. The report shows that there is enough vacant partially or develop, partially developed or redevelopable land in the urban areas to support the economic growth by 2040. The supplies vary by jurisdiction. Here's a breakdown of the actual jurisdictions and the available lands, uh, the available acreage in each district, uh, for commercial, mixed-use, and industrial. The Grand Mound, Lacey, Olympia, and Tom Water have the most acreage and available vacant and redevelopable lands for industrial uses. Planning goals under the Growth Management Act, uh, that closely related to this, touch on urban growth, reduce sprawl and economic development. The urban growth encourages development in urban areas where adequate public facilities and services exist and can be provided in an efficient manner. Reduce sprawl, reduce the inappropriate conversion of undevelopable lands into sprawling low-density development. And finally, economic development. Encourage economic development throughout the state that is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plans, promotes economic opportunity for all citizens for this state, especially for the unemployed and for the disadvantaged persons. And the expansion of existing businesses and recruitment of new businesses, and recognize regional differences impacting economic development opportunities, and encourage growth in areas experiencing insignificant, insufficient economic growth, and all within the capacities of the state's natural resource, public services, and public facilities. Sorry. Uh, rural character is defined as refers to the pattern of land use and developed, and development established by the county and the rural element of the comprehensive plan. Rural character touches on open space, natural landscapes, and vegetated vegetation that predominantly covers more than the built environment, that fosters traditional rural lifestyles, rural, rural-based economics, and opportunities for both live, work, and to live and work in the rural areas, that provides visual landscapes that are traditionally found in rural areas and communities, that are compatible with the use of land by wildlife and for fish and wildlife habitat, that reduce the inappropriate conversion of undeveloped land into sprawling low-density development, that generally do not require the extension of urban governmental services, and that is consistent with the protection of natural surface flow and groundwater, and surface water recharge and discharge areas. Urban growth is defined as growth that is, makes intensive use of land for the location of building structures and impermeables, impermeable surfaces to such degree that is incompatible with the primary use of land for the production of food, other agricultural products, or fibers, or extraction of mineral resources, rural uses, and rural development, and natural resource lands dedicated under RCW. A pattern of more intensive rural development is not urban growth. The Rural Resource Industrial District, which is a Thurston County industrial district, 's purpose is to provide areas for natural resource-based industries, to provide areas where industry's uses may be located involving processing, fabrication, wholesaling, and storage of products associated with natural resources, and to provide areas where industrial uses may locate that are functionally and visually compatible with the character of the rural area. Some of the characteristics for the RRI zoning district is that industrial areas in development shall be functionally and visually compatible with the surrounding rural areas in uses in order to protect the rural character. And the land should be compatible with the supporting development with minimal environmental constraint, not detrimentally impacting agricultural, forestry, agricultural, aquacultural, and other natural resource uses, have utility services at levels appropriate to serve the rural area, and not require public water or sewer, and be compatible with the rural character and not disrupt the visual character of the rural landscape. Some of the, excuse me. A few of the relevant, uh, comprehensive plan policies touch on that new industrial uses. The rural areas should generally be appropriate with low densities and the rural areas. Uh, rezoning should only occur when circumstances substantially change. Um, the public services and utilities should be provided, should be provided to the urban growth areas, and then extensions beyond the UGA should only be two areas for health and water quality problems. The county should support the effort to diversify the county's economy through encouragement of more manufacturing-based industries and enhancement of other target industries, including information technology, healthcare, tourism, food production, manufacturing, and wood product forestry. And finally, the county should designate industrial areas in a sufficient quality, quantity, and quality to meet current and future needs. So part of the rezon and land use amendment is a change to the RRI zoning district to ensure that the applicant's uses, uh, that he wishes to have, which is manufacturing, would be plausible with this rezon. Um, the first part would change the locational requirement to read that locations within one-half mile Interstate 5 interchange or adjacent to industrial development as of date. The second aspect of the change relates to the road classification that the industrial development is taking place on, and it would read vehicular access is from a county arterial or collector road, or state highway, or adjacent to an existing industrial development utilizing existing county roads, and within 500 feet of the county arterial or collector road, or state highway.
And before you go on, Andrew, I just want to jump in here real quick and clarify to the Board of County Commissioners why a code change is needed for this land use change. Um, the two properties, the two parcels that are under consideration are about three miles from an I-5 interchange, and they do not access a county arterial road directly. They use a local road for a small amount. I think it's probably maybe 100, 200 feet to get to the county arterial road. So in order for the applicant to do their more intensive industrial use, warehousing, or manufacturing, they would need to meet this locational and performance criteria in the code, and as it's currently written, they don't meet it, so they would need a code change to accompany the proposed land use amendment. I'm gonna let Andrew pick it back up.
So, we took a look at just the overall, um, implications of this proposed code change um, in relation to the other RRI zoning districts. And so what we did is we produced three maps with geodata that shows the different RRI clusters throughout the county, and highlights the adjacent areas in yellow, um, that could be impacted by this code change. And so I'll just run through the three. This one is off, uh, Little Rock and Highway 12. This is about 128th Avenue and Little Rock Road, and finally, the Maytown area and near the Highway 5, Highway I-5 access. From the start of this process, staff has received 254 public comments. 14 of them are in support of the proposal while 240 are against the proposal. The comments in, the comments in support of the proposal highlight that there, uh, highlights the adjacent industrial uses located within Lewis County, the locational benefits, the uses currently that the agriculture use is not practiced on the property, and that it's located within a federal opportunity zone. The comments against the proposal highlight the loss of agricultural land within the county, the 2021 Buildable Lands Report, the existing agricultural uses on the parcel, compliance with the comprehensive plan, the Thurston, uh, Thurston Climate Action Plan, the belief that the county should docket and conduct a community-driven review of rural warehousing in the 2022-2023 docket cycle, and finally, the CP16 Community Driven Review of Agricultural Policies and Programs should be completed first. So this is an optional code revision, uh, that was submitted by the applicant. Uh, it came in after the close of the planning commission comment period, so we have not heard from the public on the revised code language. We did offer to present this, uh, information to the planning commission, but they confirmed that they will not consider any comments received after the close of the public hearing. Um, the comp, the proposal is very similar to the one in that it affects the two areas, locational and the road access. The first uh, part, which is the location, reads location, located within a one-half mile Interstate 5 interchange, or within a federal opportunity zone south of the Grand Mound UGA, west of I-5, and east of Highway 99. The road access requirement speaks to vehicular access is from a county arterial or collector road, or state highway, or if also situated within a federal opportunity zone, access may be from a county road. So on November 3rd, the planning commission created two recommendations. The first recommendation refers to the actual application, which was a unanimous decision to recommend denial of the, uh, land use and rezon amendment, and recommend no changes to Chapter 20.29, the RRI zoning district. The second is related to, um, the industrial lands in Maya.
Yeah, and I'll just touch on this second recommendation that came from the planning commission. This is not specific to the proposal, but a little bit more general in nature and process-based. So the planning commission did recommend that the county conduct a countywide study air of the availability of industrial lands, both in rural and urban growth areas, and that if it is determined that additional industrial lands are needed, that the county do a comprehensive look at where those be cited. So it would be a countywide look, not just on the site-by-site basis. And they also recommended holding any future individual rezon requests for industrial uses that come in. Um, so, so we do have one other request that's already officially docketed, but, uh, the recommendation here would be to hold any future requests that come in until the study is complete. And, uh, we're not asking for a decision on this from the Board today. The second recommendation about this countywide study will be brought back to the Board when we have docketing discussions in early 2022. So, um, we can discuss this in more detail either after the briefing today, but ideally we'll be looking for direction on this second recommendation, uh, during the docketing conversations early next year.
Okay. For those of the public that's tuning in, um, this is the project webpage, and located on the webpage is information on the project, project materials, and the public opportunity section, and where, uh, the public is welcome to submit public comment on the proposal. Today, staff did, uh, issue a SEPA determination of significance on the application. Uh, the application comment period is open until December 1st at 5:00 PM. Under the public comment section on the webpage is a dropdown box that you can choose SEPA and submit your comments on the SEPA proposal. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions the Board may have. Thank you.
Just out of the gate, you are asking for us to decide the first piece of the planning commission recommendation today?
No, so this is just, this is just an informational presentation, so if you have any questions that we can address and work through, um, for the next several meetings that we'll probably be having on this proposal.
So we're not, we're not prepared to schedule a public hearing on this item because the determination for SEPA was just issued today, and, um, public hearings aren't to be held until after that's complete. So, uh, we would, we're prepared to bring back additional information on the proposal if the Board has any further questions, and we anticipate there will probably be at least another brief needed on the environmental determination, um, before we can schedule a public hearing. So we're not looking for direction from the Board at this time, but if there's more information that you'd like on the proposal, we can certainly bring that back for you.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes. Uh, my question's in relation to, um, the comment period that is now open until December 1st. Is that just for the SEPA review, or what does that include?
It's, it's just for the SEPA determination.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew, how much land is, uh, in this nationally significant farmland designation at this location? How many acres, or what are we talking about? It looks pretty small.
It's fairly small. I would say it's anywhere from two to four acres. I didn't go in and measure it because the map doesn't necessarily line up super well. Um, but it's a very small portion of the actual property.
And, and what, what is actually significant about that it ended up in that designation?
So the organization that put that together used multiple metrics. I didn't dive too deeply into it, but they use different metrics that dictate, uh, what's great farmland, and then it compiled on other factors, creates small portions, and they're, they're throughout the United States. Um, but it's something about that specific land with many factors they check off that states that this is the perfect farmland if properly irrigated while, um, agricultural uses are being completed.
Are we automatically including all three of the locations that you've touched on today in this one ordinance adjustment?
No, so only the two parcels would be rezoned to rural resource industrial. However, the code change will impact all of rural unincorporated Thurston County. So those three maps that Andrew showed with, um, kind of the highlighted parcels, that's just an example of other parcels that could potentially do these more intensive industrial uses if they pursued a rezon request. But there's no proposal to rezon those areas with this. This is just the citizen application for the two parcels.
And so you're saying that it sets precedence, maybe? Is that what you're saying by that using the term it has an impact?
The, the code changes will be a lot further reaching than the two parcels that the applicant has applied for. I think that's the gist to take away from that.
And I guess I'm wondering why that is. Is there a precedence that is being set? Something I didn't hear. Somebody was talking, but I couldn't hear it.
Sorry, Commissioner, this is Christina Shapow. Uh, so when we do a code change, it doesn't just affect the proponent that is asking for that code change, be it with a comprehensive plan amendment, or just a code change, um, in general. It would affect anybody and everybody within the permitting jurisdiction. So that code change would apply to all lands within Thurston, unincorporated Thurston County, um, that are currently in this particular zoning district, or would in the future want to be in this zoning district.
And, and that economic depressed zone, could you give us a little breakdown on what that is?
The opportunity zone is a federal designation that is applied throughout all communities throughout the United States that allows for special tax incentives if, uh, the applicants of the property development, or the businesses that are on those properties utilize. So staffing increasing, different improvements to return a value back to the community, you can receive deferred tax, um, benefits from that program. And so that property, sorry?
Okay, how, how did that happen to get implemented for those few acres down there?
That's a federal designation, and there are actually five very, very large areas in Thurston County. It just so happens that the applicant's two parcels fall within one of those federal economic opportunity zones. Um, and it's a small, those two parcels are a very small portion of that specific economic opportunity zone, which goes all the way up into the Grand Mound urban growth area, and then all the way to the west, I believe it goes into the adjacent county. Um, but, but it covers a large area, and it's not just for development-like industrial uses. If someone has a home-based business, or does a, uh, small food shop that they want to open, or a small daycare facility, those uses could also potentially be eligible for the tax incentives that are given by the federal government under those areas. So, uh, Thurston County does have quite a few of those. We have five total. Um, this is just one of them that applies to the applicant's parcels.
And what was the purpose, and when did that happen, that they were put into these areas, these five areas? When did that happen? Who did it? Did they petition the Board, state legislature, federal, whatever?
No, it was the federal government in 2017 passed the law that essentially created these zones, and it was based on census tracts and just overall economic data that the federal government had. Um, and they just kind of plopped them down. Some are in areas where you don't really see much development, but based on the data that the federal government has through census and the economics, it looked like that. So that's where you see large swaths of land that are covered by this zone, and maybe one day it will become that, but based on their data, that's, that was an area that needed this designation to help improve the overall economy for that area.
So, so these were economically depressed areas, right? They're under a certain federal poverty level. The census, they're, the tracts are designated. You can look them up online on a federal website. It, it was something that feds did in 2017?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do we have, I, I guess I haven't seen a map with those five tracts.
We don't much use them.
Can you bring up that slide again, Andrew?
Give me one second to pull that slide up again.
Or the county. Yeah.
I'm gonna see the map of those zones.
Oh, on, on page seven, it looks like there's something there.
Yep, I just pulled it up on the screen as well. All the areas shown in pink, um, are opportunity zones, and you, it, this map doesn't show the jurisdictional boundaries, but the portion that's related to, um, this proposal actually crosses into, goes pretty much into centralia. Uh, it goes into their urban growth area, where you'll see that industrial development, where the Michaels warehousing. You, you can see that it kind of follows I-5 and touches on all of those areas. And then there's a few others throughout the county.
Are we gonna have to be aware of this stuff as zoning issues come in, come to the Board?
No, this is just, this is just a tax benefit for property owners that are located within that area. Um, it, there's nothing that would impact the overall zoning, and any zoning that, really, any zoning can utilize the benefits of this depending on, uh, what's happening on the property.
Okay, I guess more to come. I see Travis is up there and maybe this is a question for him, but I noticed in one of the comments that Futurewise had made a comment saying that this proposal, if enacted, would be contrary to state law. Can somebody explain a little more about that contention and what our staff response is to that?
I, Travis is with us, so I'll see.
Did he breathe?
But he's frozen.
Okay.
Able to hear me?
We can't hear you, Travis.
Okay, I, yeah, I apologize that my camera's facing the wrong direction and I don't think you want to look at the wall right now. I, as I understand it, you know, Futurewise's contention is that, that this, if it were passed by, by the board, that it would be enabling urban sprawl. And, you know, the argument is based on the contention that, you know, this is right near the UGA and that the proper way to expand UGA would be to change that very, you know, that boundary through the UGA process under GMA, not through specific rezones piecemeal that would essentially, you know, extend what they would characterize as municipal or city, uh, city uses that would spread beyond that boundary. Now, you know, that's the argument they're making and trying to persuade the county to take a different course. Of course, it, you know, what matters the most is what the Growth Management Hearing Board would decide. I don't know if we got comments to the contrary in terms of why this would be different, but I suppose the counterargument may be something along the lines of this would be, this industrial use would, would actually be characterized as rural in nature. Of course, it all kind of comes down to specifics. You know, certainly if we got to a point where the board is considering this as, as an option and going against the recommendation of Planning Commission, I would recommend we have a confidential discussion to talk about the pros and cons. But in a nutshell, that's, that's kind of where Futurewise's contention is, or where it's coming from, if that's at all helpful.
You're not aware of direct case decisions that would support their argument?
You know, with most, Commissioner, you know, most of these growth management decisions and case law is relate, you know, a lot of this argument relies on previous growth management cases in both our region and the other regions across the state. There isn't a whole lot of case law that defines and directs these kinds of, these kinds of policies and growth management acts. So there, you know, there is a lot of complexity to it, but there is, I'll, I'll put it this way, I, I don't, I don't think there's, this is necessarily a black and white issue. It all kind of comes down to the details and, you know, I think at this point of your consideration, you should just be at least aware of this concern. And as I said, if we get closer to your deliberation, I, I would recommend, you know, further conversation in confidential, you know, in a confidential venue to allow you to have full legal advice on the, on the, the prospects of, of, of being able to defend and action if you were to decide to take legislation forward.
Okay, thanks Travis. Different topic. On page, do we know what the use, proposed use is here? I ask because you highlighted on page slide 14 that the county's comp plan encourages manufacturing-based industries, but then the Planning Commission talks about a survey of warehouses. So do we know whether they're going to be manufacturing goods or they're going to be building a warehouse?
The applicant intended on a use more closely related to distribution. So like a distribution facility similar to the Michaels distribution facility in Lewis County on the other side of the property line.
A warehouse. So that means that that comprehensive plan policy isn't really at play here.
That's correct. And I will say that that policy specifically focuses more on, and, and the land use designation as well encourages manufacturing industries in that zone that are resource-based. So that would include forestry, agricultural, or timber. Those are the, sorry, I repeated timber twice. Mineral forestry or agriculture manufacturing industries and, and those are kind of considered our rural industrial resource manufacturing uses under that zone.
On slide seven, when we look at these, I had some of the same questions as Commissioner Edwards regarding opportunity zones and what that means for us. You know, should we be doing something different because there are these pink blobs on this map? It doesn't sound like it to me. Up in the upper left corner, I mean, that's all forested land. I think it's a lot of tribal land and whatnot. I, I would have trouble believing that's a place where we should start industrializing and encouraging this type of development. Just as an example, in terms of how I should be viewing these opportunity zones and their significance. Am I on base or can you say anything about that?
So with the opportunity zones, I would say their placement, take it with a grain of salt, I would say they look at specific economic factors and population factors, but didn't necessarily look at anything else that's happening on the ground. So there could be wildlife preservations, there could be protected areas, but based on that county and that track, that's where they think the best return should be. In terms of sculpting anything related to this, I don't think that's a necessary step. I, the benefits apply regardless of the zoning. So a home-based business, business like Maya mentioned, all the way up to a massive distribution or manufacturing facility can all utilize the opportunity zone and the benefits that come with it if they meet the necessary criteria to qualify for the tax incentives. And so I would say no, they wouldn't need to, nothing needs to be done to accommodate the opportunity zones.
And, and that information, the fact that this parcel falls in an economic opportunity zone, that's more of just kind of a supporting tidbit fact for this proposal. We don't necessarily need to do anything from the county's perspective to implement those areas. It's just an informational piece of support for this specific proposal.
It just, well, the alternative, the alternative proposal promulgated by the applicant was actually going to bootstrap that into a policy and basically say that if we were dealing with one of these opportunity zones, vehicular access could be from a county road, from any county road, which sounds to be quite different than the way it's been structured to this point.
That is correct. So the, the applicant's alternative language would use the federal opportunity zone as kind of a basis to warrant more intensive industrial uses and also to allow for use on local county roads. This, as Andrew mentioned, this came in after the Planning Commission hearing, so it was applicant recommended. We briefly went over some of the GMA goals and policies that relate to that proposal, but it hasn't had in-depth research on what that would really mean and if it's appropriate to only apply it to a portion of a single economic opportunity zone or if there's, maybe it needs to be applied to all five in Thurston County. So, so the way it's written right now, it would only apply to a small sliver of that one economic opportunity zone in the south Thurston County Grand Mound area. And as that map showed, there are four others in Thurston County that cover kind of the Niskualee sub-area up in northern county unless there's a few, and those would not be included. So there may be more research if the board wants to entertain the applicant's proposed code revision.
How, kind of my last topic area, this EIS, this determination of significance resulting in an EIS, I'm just wondering how that process looks, how much time is involved and is it illegally recalled? Like, the reason I'm asked is because the, the Planning Commission made a recommendation. Doesn't sound like it's going back to the Planning Commission. You said that they didn't want to hear different, you know, additional proposals and, but now we've got this process and I mean, I know some EISs take like years to do. I don't know how long this type of EIS would take to do, but if I look at the bullet points on the back, earth, air, water, plants, animals, land use, ag land, energy, natural resources, transportation, public service, utilities, water, septic, historical, cultural preservation, noise, light, glare, economic impacts and aesthetics, that sounds like a lot of stuff. So my question is, if the board agreed with the Planning Commission, would, would this need to go forward or is it like the trains on the tracks? It needs to get all the way to the finish line through public hearing and all of that? I'm just, just curious. Not that I've necessarily formed an opinion, but I just, it just seems interesting that the Planning Commission recommendation sounds like it's not going to change. And this is, sounds like a really hefty process that's been initiated by this determination. So I just wondered what the flexibility is at this point in the process.
So I'll weigh in here. So the CEPA process is required for all comprehensive plan amendments. And during the review of the checklist for this particular comprehensive amendment, it was made, the decision was made that there was a determination of significance. We'll do the analysis on the, all the different environmental areas that you just listed off in comparison to the proposed action, a no action and an alternative action. And depending on the information that comes out of that EIS, the applicant may be able to, not be able to, may change their application, their proposal. And if it is significantly changed, it would go back to the Planning Commission for their review and then come back to the Board of County Commissioners with a revised recommendation. Should the environmental impact statement come back and the proponent not choose to make any changes to their, their plan, their proposed amendment, the decision or the environmental impact statement information would then be brought before the Board of County Commissioners as a package for your overall consideration for this particular project.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you.
No further questions?
It's all clear as mud now.
Sorry. Okay, I have a question. Somewhere was said that this came in after the Planning Commission's ruling. What was that this came in? What's that referring to?
The applicant's alternative language to the code. So Andrew presented two different options of code language since that will need to be changed in order for them to do warehousing and distribution. One was a staff drafted language that went through the full Planning Commission process beginning in August and for the public hearing in October. The second that was proposed that references the federal opportunity zones was suggested by the applicant following the public hearing. And that came in, I believe it was towards the end of October that that comment came in with that suggested alternative language.
And this, this is kind of maneuvering on the applicant's part to figure out ways around or something?
I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say it's maneuvering at all. That, that was the applicant's response to the public comment. As you know, we had 200 and something public comments and most of those were against the proposal with concerns over the code change. And so the applicant wanted to suggest an alternative that might mitigate some of the public's concerns. And so we offered him to provide a written comment. The Planning Commission did not consider that because it was after the close of the public hearing, but we did inform the applicant, we would bring that forward to the board and we can certainly gear that up to include in a future public hearing before the board if we, if we do want to consider that.
I guess what kind of scares me about this is looking at that opportunity map in pink. That whole sensitive area of the Niskualee River in the flood plain, then next to the reservation and actually through some of the military property. I don't even know how they would do something like that. It looks like they were double dumb and just painting with their paintbrush somewhere. I just don't get that. I mean, just, it's kind of scares me to think we have to consider that much stupidity in our decision. A little frustrated about that. I'm glad we don't have to do it today.
And the language that the applicant has suggested really cuts it down to a very small piece of that single economic opportunity zone in Grand Mound. They specify what roads it would need to fall between, so it's only the very eastern portion of one of the economic opportunity zones. It's not all five. And that would be something for the county to consider. Why does that small portion of that economic opportunity zone warrant some sort of special consideration for more intensive industrial uses over the other four and a half?
Other than the, other than the four and a half, what was that? What was the four and a half you're referring to?
The other four and a half economic opportunities.
These other opportunity zones?
Why would we, yeah. Why would we create special rules for one?
I mean, why would we, this, this thing along the Niskualee River is kind of scary. I don't get that. And then I don't get if they're making that, if they're advocating that we just restrict our activities to this particular opportunity zone, I'm wondering why it has an effect on all these other areas that you talked about.
So would you say that the optional code revision, which is really the thing that brings these federal opportunity zones into play, would you say that the applicant has written their suggestion in such a way that they would be the only property that qualifies under this code?
No. And, and so it would be quite a few properties from the Lewis County urban growth area all the way up to the Grand Mound urban growth area. And there's a stretch of road along Old Highway 99 there that the applicant argues is not, it, it's not really agriculture. It's seen kind of these more intensive uses already and so it would be appropriate for that area to see more industrial uses, but it's sandwiched right between two urban growth areas. So that would be the specific location that, that the applicant's optional code revision would apply to.
Okay, thank you.
And then going back to that rezone of the, I don't know, permitted uses, page 15, why is some of the material in blue? Like under I, you know, located within one half mile of interstate paint, then it's in blue under, or adjacent, so you can click on it, but why is that?
And so the, the blue is the language change, the new material to make it so that their warehousing use would be permitted in that area. And so everything that's in black is existing. Everything blue and underlined is new.
Okay. And kind of a general question, the Planning Commission's proposal about the warehouse review kind of thing, that second part, is that a good? I mean, the board would obviously make the decision based on workload and everything else, all the other docket requests, but is that, is that, is that something that staff would be, would do? And is it, would it give us information that like we don't have in the billable lands report or whatever? I mean, is it, do you think that would be a useful thing for staff to undertake?
So what we can say about that recommendation is it provides a more comprehensive look at the county and unincorporated Thurston County permitting jurisdiction and where these particular types of uses could, should, or would go in a more, in a larger context than just looking at each individual amendment as they come in, as they're requested by a particular property owner. We could provide the board with, and yes, it would be staff that would complete the work. And we would be able to provide a more comprehensive information for the board to look at and potentially designate, should they, so choose to take up this docket item when it comes to our director. And should they make a decision? And should they make a decision on whatever we provide forwards to you all, it would just be much more comprehensive than these one-by-one requests that come in on an annual basis. It would also streamline the process by which these applicants can actually come in and get their permits. It would make it faster so they wouldn't have to do this comprehensive plan amendment change in the map and then go to our permitting side of CEPAD. They would know where they can put these types of activities and go directly to our permitting section.
Could I jump in real quick?
Go ahead, Josh.
So Joshua Cummings, Director, Community Planning and Economic Development. Good job, Chris. That warehouse, total overlook, overlook. Commissioner Edwards, remember this is part of a concept of what kind of economic development can we do just right outside of the UGAs and unincorporated area? So this would fall into that, and it dovetails with some of the discussion on professional services as well. So we would look to a contractor to do an overlook of the entire county to see where economic development would be most appropriate right outside of the UGAs. And part of that would be the warehouse. So it's a concept that's been talked about in the past. And so that, all kind of lines, that would come up in your docketting discussions in the new year. So you would, if you'd like to add that to the docket, the commissioners would say, yes, let's do that look, and here's that priority. It is not currently a docketed item, but it would provide fulfillment of a concept that Commissioner Edwards has been talking about for three or four years.
Robert, you have a question?
I was just curious about how this does or doesn't fit in with the types of land that we have to designate in our normal GMA comprehensive plan.
Exactly, that is exactly why we would need that look at.
Yeah.
Then we would have to put all of those things together to make sure that we're not overstepping the boundaries of GMA.
So and when would we normally do this kind of a look? It, it's just part of our normal process of updating the plan?
Exactly. But when we go, when the board directs land rezon uses for the county.
Okay, so this is something we would need to do eventually.
Eventually. And a couple of things, sorry, go ahead. Real quick, I just want to jump in. The question Minister has to get going here, so I wanted to just put a bow on this real quick. This is the facilitation of the process. So the Planning Commission has had a long time to chew on this. The staff has been working on this. You saw Andrew's presentation, it was very technical and got right down in the weeds for you guys. Now is the time then when you're forming those questions. Staff and myself were available to answer those questions before you come to a decision. But this is, it starts with the board making the prioritization list in the year previous, or 2021. And then goes through all that work, it's the staff and the Planning Commission. And now it comes back to you for questions before you make a decision. So recognizing it's kind of feeling a little technical right now and you've got a bit of a packet, we're here to answer those questions before you make a decision. The E I S is set up so that whichever decision you guys, the commissioners, make, it goes faster for the applicant. One of the questions or the requests that we got from the board in the past has been, whatever the answer is, get the applicant to the answer as fast as you can, whether it's a denial or an approval. And so that's what staff has been accomplishing here. This was number six of priorities eight on the comprehensive plan docket. And so I just wanted to provide appreciation to the staff for the work on that. And any questions were available. Maya, I stepped on you a little bit. Do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, nope, you covered it all.
And when is the board anticipated to make a decision on?
What's the timing, Maya or Andrew, on the decision for next steps for the board?
Right now, we're looking if there's any additional information the board would like a supplemental briefing on. So in the near term, you can provide those requests to, excuse me, to staff. The process and timeline for the proposal will depend on the E I S timeline.
All right, I do have another question. I got a minute, and then I gotta have to leave. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. I'll go to the committee's board.
Why, why did the Planning Si- Commission say no to these proposals when they didn't have? I mean, there were some changes that came in after they said no or before they said no. I, I'm trying to, we had some changes that came in that they did not hear.
They came in after the public comment period.
But the Planning Commission did see those changes as proposed by the applicant?
They, sorry.
We did include that in the packet for the follow-up work session with the Planning Commission. They do not have to consider public comment that is received after the close of the public hearing. That can create a logistical nightmare for the Planning Commission where they're just receiving endless comments that come in and, 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 and then a proposal never ends. So we provided it to them, and they confirmed that they would not like to review public comment received after the close of the hearing. So all that was reviewed with the public and the Planning Commission was the staff-presented code option and the land use change for the two parcels.
So they saw it, but they decided not to formally reopen and engage on it and just let it go to the Board of County Commissioners, is what, which is what you've done.
And even though it's a proposal for how to structure the code, it's from the applicant, it's considered public comment?
So the question from the Assistant County Manager was, does the additional information from the applicant, is that considered public comment?
Yes, at this point in the process, it is.
That's why they didn't pay.
Okay, we've got about one minute left. Anything, Commissioner Mahia, that you'd like to close out with?
So we will be coming back, if I heard this correctly, with the kind of the second proposal, which was to do that comprehensive study of industrial zoning. Is that the case, where we're gonna have another work session on that?
So let's add that to the discussion for early next year.
Docket, that'll come back to you as part of the docket, as you say.
Part of the docket, okay.
And this, whether or not to adopt either the staff-proposed change, the optional change, or no change at all, that decision will come to the board after an E I S is completed.
Correct.
Which could be about how long?
Maya?
Roughly? Two weeks, three months?
Can you hear a question, Maya?
I can't hear you, Chris, I'm muted, so I was gonna give her the opportunity to speak first.
Oh, sorry, go for it, Chris.
Okay. So, yeah, the E I S can take up to a year to complete. It will depend on the.
Okay, well then, more to come. Anybody else want to add any last-minute comments from staff? Hearing none, thank you all for attending, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
It is three o'clock.
Good job.
Good job, Robert.